Good evening and welcome to our candidate forum. We'd like to thank our sponsors for tonight, including the Orange Peel, 103.3 Asheville FM, the League of Women Voters, and Leslie Shaw Design. My name is Megan Rogers with the Asheville Independent Restaurant Association, or AIR, and I'm joined today by my co-hosts, Karis Roberts with the Asheville Brewers Alliance, Katie Cornell with Arts ABL, Sherri Lucas with Go Local, and Rick Bell from the Asheville Buncombe Hotel Association. The five of us will be moderating tonight's event. And we're going to begin with our county commissioner panel, but a few housekeeping items first. Tonight's forum is being livestreamed by 103.3 Asheville FM. And a video recording of the event will be made available through our host partners as soon as it's ready. Our co-hosts will be stating their names and the names of the candidates before each one speaks to help those listening to the livestream. Questions have been pre-selected by our co-hosts and were shared with the candidates ahead of time. This is an opportunity for us to learn more about each candidate so we can make informed decisions. Please be respectful of our candidates, hosts, and each other. Disrespectful attendees will be asked to leave. You've been warned. All right, I'm going to turn things over. Oh, one more thing. Please note that Amanda Edwards and Van Duncan are running for county commission chair, but were unable to join us tonight. County candidates will introduce themselves during the opening remarks. But first, we're going to go over some ground rules, and I'll turn it over to Katie for that.
Hi, everybody. As Megan said, I'm Katie Cornell with Arts ABL. And I'm going to go over tonight's ground rules. So our moderators will be asking all the questions and be calling on our candidates. We'll switch it up each time so everybody has a chance to go first. Candidates will have one minute for the icebreaker question and for their closing remarks, and two minutes for each of the follow-up questions. Moderators will time the candidate responses. We actually have a timekeeper down in the crowd. Rebecca's being our timekeeper tonight. She will hold up -- thank you, Rebecca. She'll be holding up the yellow card when you have 15 seconds left and the red card when you need to stop speaking.
Okay, my name is Rick Bell. I'm the executive director of the Asheville Buncombe Hotel Association. We appreciate you being here tonight. We'll start the discussion tonight with an icebreaker question to allow the candidates to introduce themselves. As I call on each of you, please share with us your name, the office you're running for, and also your top three policy-focused areas. So we will begin with Paul Benjamin.
Hi, I'm Paul Benjamin. I'm running for county commissioner in District One. My top three priorities is family, safety, and economics.
Okay, next up, Jennifer Horton.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Horton. I am running for Buncombe County Commissioner, District One. My platform is communities, mental health, and progress. Thank you.
Next up, Bruce O'Connell.
Hello, everyone. My name is Bruce O'Connell. I'm running for Buncombe County Commissioner, District Two. My priorities are making it affordable to live here in this area, to make it safe and secure to live here in this area, and to protect and preserve what brought me here, which is the environment, the mountains, the fields, the water, and the air.
And last up, but certainly not least, Teri Wells.
Hello, I am Teri Wells, and I have been serving as your Buncombe County Commissioner since you elected me in 2020. And I have a track record of listening to our community and getting things accomplished. With my leadership, we are conserving thousands of acres of farmland, mountains, and land that will provide public recreation. We are investing in public schools because that is an investment in our next generation. And strong schools equal strong communities. And we are getting our people connected to high-speed internet across this county. And that provides valuable economic benefits because then they have more job opportunities and business opportunities. And we are investing in public safety and emergency services with the necessary resources to support our first responders and keep our communities safe. I love our community, and I appreciate the opportunity to have this discussion this evening.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Sherri Lucas with Go Local Asheville. And our first question tonight has to do with cost of living and affordability with our local businesses. Our local businesses that make up Asheville and Buncombe County are so unique to our area, and they're seeing their expenses continue to rise. Wages are also increasing to keep up with cost of living. Inflation that has increased the cost of goods and services are all making it more difficult for small businesses to stay afloat, and then the property tax increases that are coming. So the question is, what ideas do you have to support and sustain our local business community and keep them in Buncombe County? Each candidate has two minutes to respond, and we're going to start with you, Teri.
Our entrepreneurs and local businesses are the heartbeat of our community. And we have always been a creative, independent-minded community. And when our local businesses thrive, then our community thrives. I listen to local business owners all over Buncombe County. And what I hear from them are challenges with keeping up with wages, access to lending, affordable housing for employees, childcare, reliable transportation, and county and city regulations. And I hear you, and I am committed to standing up for you. I have supported the county strategically prioritizing early childhood education and affordable housing. And we are continuing to assess how we can best support public transit investments. With my four years of experience in relationship building, I am passionate about focusing on our entrepreneurs and small businesses. To support them, and some of these objectives will make good sense to increase opportunities and lower the cost of doing business. One, asking staff to develop a position for business excellence who will facilitate the permitting process to make it far easier for businesses to do business with the county, and who will support opportunities for expanding businesses, such as helping them identify where they can get support in the form of grants or tax deductions for certain key investments. Also, working with and assessing with my colleagues across the state about the viability of eliminating the capital asset and machinery tax for businesses with fewer than 30 employees or $10 million in revenue. It seems counterproductive to tax business machinery values when these are essential investments made by the business in their future viability, and also increase opportunities for Buncombe County businesses to sell services and goods to the county. In closing, one reason businesses want to be here is because of our quality of life. And in order to ensure that we maintain our good quality of life, I will continue to seek to leverage our state and federal infrastructure funding because this will ensure that we are planning for the future.
Thank you, Teri. Bruce?
I've been in business in this area for 45 years. I run a business. I know what it takes to make a business work. There's two ways to have a successful business, whether it be small or large. And you can either increase revenues or, and, you can cut expenses. For the local businesses that are around Asheville, they are unique. They are small businesses, and they're what bring color and culture to Asheville. It's what makes Asheville special. But they're struggling. They're struggling because they work in an area that their present government has got a spending disease. The taxes are going up. The services from the county are going down. The safety and security is a big problem downtown. And we have to address those issues if we want to bring more tourists into the area so they can spend more money. Also, to be able to employ people, the people have got to be able to live in this area. I run into the same problem. Affordability is a big problem. Well, if you have a place that you want to rent to someone and you want to keep the rents reasonable, you can't be charged higher taxes. You can't be charged higher insurance on your rental property. And every time the value of your house goes up due to something like revaluation, it costs you more to provide rental housing. If a person wants to buy a house, they've got to be able to afford it. And with the way taxes are going up in this area, no one can afford to buy a home anymore in Buncombe County. I believe this county has a spending disease. For some reason, the county thinks they can have everything they want. And I believe you can't have everything you want, but there is enough money to have everything we need if the county budget is managed effectively.
Thank you, Bruce. Jennifer?
As a business owner here in Buncombe County, I believe in a multifaceted approach. I will advocate for targeted tax relief for small businesses, incentives for small businesses, incentives for small businesses to alleviate the impact of rising property taxes, explore creating grant programs or low-interest loans for business owners. I will collaborate between our local government and business owners here in Buncombe County to foster creative solutions such as shared services. One idea that I do like is workforce housing, initiatives for business owners to offer that to our employees.
Thank you, Jennifer. Paul?
Our businesses in the community, first we got to realize Buncombe County is a sanctuary county, which means we have an influx of people that drives the cost of services up in our county. And the increased regulations on businesses also drives the cost and the taxes. When you increase taxes on a business, the business now has to pass the cost into their product, and that product is being passed on to the consumer. So when you increase the regulations, businesses have to pay on all their services. And over regulations on these businesses, now that increases the cost. Security. In talking to some of the businesses downtown, their customers are threatened. Some of the customers are accosted at their tables. So it is driving fear of consumers from visiting downtown. Also, the parking regulations in downtown doesn't make it conducive for people to come and support their local business. So all of those things drive costs of businesses. And you're seeing in the newspapers how many businesses are closing their doors after so many years of being here is because people can't afford to live here in the economy. I spoke to the police chief. He said the police officers can't even live in the county. They have to live in other surrounding areas, 35 to 40 minutes away. So as we begin to look at a comprehensive approach, when the increase of expenses go up, then it means that the businesses can thrive in our community. So we need to look at lowering the taxes, making it easy for businesses to thrive in our community.
Thank you, Paul. Hi, everyone. My name is Karis Roberts with the Asheville Brewers Alliance. Our next question focuses on regulating short-term rentals. To give a little background, Buncombe County's 2043 Comprehensive Plan called for amendments to short-term rental regulations. The term "short-term rentals" refers to any residential lodging that lasts for less than 30 days. Short-term rentals are also sometimes known as STRs or vacation rentals. There were 5,268 short-term rentals in Buncombe County in 2022, according to -- or excuse me, accounting for about 4.5% of the county's total housing stock, according to AIR DNA data provided by the Buncombe County Planning Board. After putting this discussion on hold in April, the county selected members for a new short-term rental ad hoc committee in August to further explore possible recommendations. Initial recommendations would have grandfathered in existing STRs like Airbnbs and other vacation rentals, allowing them to continue renting, but limiting them to other vacation rentals -- or excuse me, but limiting them to certain zones and requiring a permit to stay active and creating restrictions on size, waste management, and types of structures that can be used as STRs or short-term rentals. So the question is, where do your candidates stand on short-term rentals? And what amendments would you like to see Buncombe County implement? Each candidate has two minutes to respond. We will start with Jennifer Horton.
Short-term rentals have been a double-edged sword here in Buncombe County. On one hand, they offer economic opportunities for our homeowners and local tourism. But on the other hand, they have contributed to housing shortages and increased property values, impacting affordability for our residents. I support reasonable regulations that balance both sides. Grandfathering in existing STRs is a fair start, but we need to be mindful of limiting the density of STRs in certain zones to preserve housing for long-term residence and maintain community integrity. I would also advocate for enforcement of permits, ensuring that STR operators follow waste management and safety regulations to minimize the impact on our neighborhoods. Additionally, we need to explore the possibility of using revenue from STR permits or taxes to fund affordable housing initiatives, ensuring that the benefits of tourism trickle back into the community by addressing the housing crisis.
Thank you so much, Jennifer. Up next, Paul.
STRs, there's two components to STRs. We have families who are struggling to make ends meet that use STRs in their home as Airbnbs and B's and so on to pay their mortgage to be able to live in the community. That needs to be protected for those families. But then we have the corporate side, where you have investors that look to buy your properties in the county that now becomes more of a commercial enterprise, which takes away the family component and its more or less glorified hotel assignment in private homes. So that component needs to be addressed because STRs need to be kept with its original intent for homeowners subsidizing their homes to begin to pay their mortgage and to be able to afford to stay in their homes. I've had some families that call me and says, "Paul, if I don't have that STR, I'm going to have to foreclose on my home or have to sell and move out." So for a lot of people, it is just that extra income to be able to afford to stay in the high cost of living within our county.
Thank you so much, Paul. Up next, Teri Wells.
Well, first of all, we want the people living and working in our community to have a good quality of life, and we want them to have the opportunity to improve the economic outlook for their families. And we want to protect our community from outside institutional investors who generally look at housing as a commodity rather than a community asset. As a sitting commissioner, it is not wise for me to take a specific stance in advance of any potential votes. It is important that I take into consideration any facts brought before me as I weigh these important decisions that impact our community, and especially take into consideration the recommendations that will come from the ad hoc short-term rental committee and the planning board. I fully expect that we will receive recommendations on how best to proceed in regulating STRs in order to ensure that our community is a place where our community members can live, work, and play. Our community members are my priority. This is a complex issue, and I continue to educate myself and listen to various perspectives. Based upon what I am learning, I understand that for some residents, the ability to rent out an ADU or homestay can be very helpful to their finances. On the other hand, I appreciate the perspective of neighbors who are concerned about their loss of community when they have people coming in and out of their neighborhood on a transient basis. As with any complex issue, we want to avoid the unintended consequences. So it is wise to assess, question, and plan before we act.
Thank you so much, Teri. And last but not least, again, the question, where do you stand on short-term rentals? And what amendments would you like to see in Buncombe County implemented? Bruce O'Connell?
I always will err on the side of private property rights. If you own property, you should be able to do with it what you want within the law. At the same time, in my neighborhood in Canlar, a fellow from Tennessee came and bought a house that was built for $300,000, and he paid $700,000 for it. And he turned it into a rental, short-term rental. Well, I know they're going to revalue all the houses next year. And when that thing comes up, it's going to show $700,000 that it sold for. That's going to make every other house on my street go up in value, and it's going to raise all the tax bills. That's not proper. Local residents should never have to worry about being taxed out of their homes. So where do I stand specifically? I always err on the side of private property rights. But yes, there should be some regulation. There's an ad hoc committee that's been set up by the county commission, and I hope they can come up with some good regulations. As far as grandfathering in the people that are already doing it, that doesn't seem fair to me. Just because somebody started doing it two weeks ago, they should be allowed to continue, or someone that needs to do it can't in the future? That doesn't make any sense. But once again, we have -- short-term rentals, by the way, are not part of the problem with housing. It says right here in the question, 4.5% of the housing stock is short-term rentals. So 4.5% is not a big portion of the available housing. So if you make the argument that these are eating up all of the affordable housing for residents, it's simply not true. So, short-term rentals, they're good. I like them. But there needs to be reasonable regulation.
Okay, thank you, candidates. I'm Megan with AIR. Our final question for our county candidates is about the housing bond and diversified funding. This is a two-part question. In 2022, the county passed a housing bond. The goal of the $40 million bond was to increase the construction of housing for people of low to moderate incomes. Currently, $30.4 million of the $40 million has been allocated. According to the last report received by the Affordable Housing Subcommittee, 169 units are complete in Buncombe County using bond funds. And data shows that 926 units are funded to be built. That leaves approximately 755 rental units still to be funded in coming years in order to reach leaders' goals to have 1,850 new affordable housing units in Buncombe County by 2030. Here's your two-part question. How do you think the commissioners can best maximize this opportunity to help support local service workers? And additionally, the majority of county funding comes from property taxes, intergovernmental funds, and sales tax. What other funding tools do you think the county should consider to better address the community's growing needs? You'll have two minutes for this question, and we will start with Bruce O'Connell.
I just want to say, all of these bonds you hear about, they're nothing more than a big loan. And these general obligation bonds that you're on the hook for, those are collateralized by future taxes. You see, to get a GO bond in place, you've got to promise that no matter what happens, it'll get paid back by raising taxes if need be. This county has a spending disease, folks. It spends more than it needs to. We need to stop the out-of-control spending and focus on what matters most. Focus on the schools, the roads, safety and security. We do not need to spend our money on frivolous pet projects that cause the budget to all of a sudden be $28 million in the red. You realize that the recent budget that was just passed was $28 million in the red, and it was balanced by robbing the reserve fund and by slightly raising taxes. That can't continue. I run a business. I wouldn't run my business that way. And if you elect me to the county commission, I will be a watchdog for your tax dollars and make sure that every penny is spent wisely and we don't continue to go into debt year after year, bond after bond, borrow more, spend more, borrow more, spend more. I don't do it in my personal life, and we can't do it as a county. It's going to sink the county. It's just like what's going on with the country. The national debt, out of control. The country's going to go bankrupt. The county's going to go bankrupt. Somebody needs to get a handle on the money quickly. And there's no one on the county commission better suited than I would be because I've run a business for 45 years, and it's been successful. I'll watch your money for you if I'm elected. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Next up is Teri Wells.
Affordable housing may be the single greatest economic challenge faced in Buncombe County. The commission set very ambitious goals. And I knew that in order to accomplish these goals, we needed to diversify our funding stream. So I educated myself and took the lead on the voter-approved bonds. The voters strongly approved the 2022 bonds with 69% approval for the $30 million open space and 62% approval for the $40 million housing bond. The bond funding has been a game changer in moving us forward on affordable housing. And we are on target to meet our goals. A key to our success is that we are leveraging the bond funds to the maximum amount possible. For the affordable rental units, we are doing this by investing in developments that qualify for affordable housing tax credits, which means for every $1 the county invests, there are around three more dollars invested through the tax credit program. This means the county's $40 million investment leverages another $120 million. We have also created active co-investment partnerships with Dogwood Health Trust and the City of Asheville to support this pipeline of affordable workforce housing. We are also redeveloping county-owned property at both Ferry Road and Cox Avenue. Ferry Road will be a mixed-use development on the French Broad River with 650 rentals or home ownership opportunities, and at least 50% of those being affordable, as well as 70 acres of conserved land with greenways and trails, which our Buncombe County Tourism Development Authority is contributing a $4 million initial lift fund grant investment. Cox Avenue will bring 200 workforce rentals in the heart of downtown, which is a prime location to accommodate service workers. This will be a good opportunity for an investment from the TDA Lift Fund as well. Our service workers are vital to this community. And I'm excited about the opportunity to provide a significant amount of housing in the heart of Asheville. I will ensure that our staff continue to seek opportunities to leverage state and federal funds in addition to the local funds as we work to meet our growing needs. And when we work together, we will continue to get important, big things done for our community.
Thank you. Thank you, Teri. Paul Benjamin, you're next.
The bond fund is nothing more than a credit card that has a payment that's coming due. And you and I know if you don't pay, if you pay your minimum payments, you have a balloon that's coming due. And that payment is coming, as Bruce was saying, is increased taxes. The one thing I'm seeing with the housing problem is the construction companies are fleeing from our county. And the number one reason they say, too many regulations. Case in point, I had a friend that just built a home in Buncombe County. The plans were approved. The house was approved. After my friend moved in, there were 20 project changes that were required by the county. I was speaking in Black Mountain a couple of weeks ago, and a new family moved in. And they were told you need to spend $50,000 to extend your driveway to accommodate the code. Two weeks later, they received a call after the project was done that, oh, sorry, that was a wrong code, and you overspent, and now they're in conflict with the county. Those are the things that are -- the regulations are driving companies out. If the companies were allowed to come in, we wouldn't have to use the bond fund to bring construction companies in because the return on the investment would come from the investment they will make in providing affordable housing. So we need to stop taxing the consumers and become creative in allowing companies to come in and do what they need to do without the overly burden of regulations. There are key regulations for safety, but then there are additional regulations that are frivolous that are not needed for construction projects. And so if we need to address our homeless problem, that will be the number one thing we need to address, the overregulation of companies that are fleeing coming to our county.
Okay, thank you, Paul. We'll wrap up this question with Jennifer Horton.
The $40 million housing bond was a vital step toward addressing our housing needs. But we must be strategic in maximizing its impact. One way to do this is by prioritizing mixed-use developments that incorporate affordable housing alongside commercial spaces, creating more sustainable and integrated communities. Partnering with private developers who are committed to affordable housing while offering them incentives can also help us meet our goals faster. In terms of diversified funding, I would explore public-private partnerships, also known as P3s, and social impact bonds, which can attract private investment into public projects without increasing taxes. Additionally, a local housing trust could provide a flexible pool of funds for affordable housing development, funding through a combination of grants and donations. By thinking creatively, we can meet our community's growing needs without placing an undue burden on our residents through increased property taxes.
Thanks, Jennifer. We're now going to move on to final thoughts from our county panel. And we're going to start with Paul Benjamin. You have one minute.
As we look at our county, we need to see that when going to McDonald's to buy a Happy Meal makes you sad, meal makes you sad, we need to realize the cost of living has gone way beyond. When you go to Walmart and you buy $200 in groceries and you put it in your glove compartment, we have an issue. So those are things that impact all of our community members, and as a county, we need to look how we can put money back in our citizens' pockets, rather than looking at our citizens as our next paycheck to pay for the frivolous things that we're doing on a county level. So we need to balance those things, and the security of our county, we need to look out at, our youth gun violence is up 255%. So as we address bringing mentors into the communities that need mentoring, and as we read the news, there are people getting killed or shot every other week, and we need to address those issues. We need to properly fund our law enforcement so that they can be back and do their job. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Jennifer Horton, final thoughts.
Thank you so much for having me here today. I'm Jennifer Horton, a Buncombe County native. I love this place. I just, I have been a registered nurse here in Buncombe County for, I mean, registered, in the nursing field, here in nursing, here in Buncombe County for over 20 years. I'm a registered nurse and business owner. I have served our community my whole life here, and I am only wanting to serve in a greater capacity and to communicate and collaborate with you guys. I thank you so much for your time and...
Thank you, Jennifer. Bruce O'Connell, final thoughts.
Thank you, everybody. Whether or not you know it or not, I've lived here and worked here for 45 years. I own and operate the Pisgah Inn. I know how to run a business. Buncombe County is a $600 million a year business right now. That's the size of the budget. And as a business person and a consumer, I know that monopolies are no good for consumers, and monopolies are no good in ecosystems, and monopolies are no good for your local government. Right now, the county commission is seven people that all think the same way. The city council is seven people that all think the same way. There is no dissenting voices, no opposing views, no one to raise their hand and ask a question. It is group think. That is not healthy. If you elect me as an unaffiliated candidate, I will represent an opposing view and have some pushback for you, so the group think goes away. I would appreciate your support for District 2. Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce. And last but not least, Teri Wells, final thoughts.
You know me. I show up, I listen, and I do the work, because I believe in our community. I grew up here and I chose to move back home because I love this place and I love our people. And I am dedicated to ensuring that it is a welcoming and prosperous community where everyone has the opportunity to thrive. And I know that when we harness the energy of our creative, independent mountain spirit, we can do amazing things together. I am Teri Wells, and I ask for your vote so that we can work together to ensure that we have a bright future for our entire community.
Thanks, Teri. And big thanks to all our county candidates. Keep giving them a big round of applause. At this point, we're going to let them exit the stage, and we're going to invite City Council member Maggie Olman up to the stage to give us a brief presentation about the city bonds.
Before I jump into the slide, hello, everybody. My name is Maggie Olman. I'm on Asheville City Council. This fellow wants me in the middle. There you go. Don't stand in the middle. I don't know what to do. No. Before I talk about the bonds, I just want to give a little bit of an update. The storm is happening, and I don't think that we're at a point of any concern, but I know I've had lots of people ask me, hey, should we be having the forum? What's going on? And so I just talked to our Emergency Operations Center, which is a cross-jurisdictional emergency response team, and so they are meeting at 7 o'clock. They're going to email all of City Council afterwards with any notices. We don't have any changes to just act, you know, live life normally, turn around, don't drown if you're seeing flash floods. You can report anything on the Asheville app at this point if you're seeing a flood or something that you're concerned about, but take it seriously. We're under a state of emergency. The hurricane hasn't even come towards us yet, so thanks for giving me the soapbox for that quick PSA before I talk about infrastructure. Okay, now on to the slides. Okay, so what I want to chat about, and I'll be pretty brief so that you can hear from the candidates that are here for City Council, is that this November 5th, the city of Asheville is putting four bonds, vote yes or no, four, on the ballot for you all to consider voting in. So if you want to go to the next slide. What is a bond referendum? A bond referendum is essentially where voters decide if the city should borrow money to work on things that we care about. And when, it's going to be November 5th, so you all will go out there and vote at the absolute bottom of your ballot, will be these four different things that you need to vote in each of the four. And the city will have seven years to issue the bonds and up to 20 years to repay them. And why are we doing this? Essentially, and you might hear more from some of the candidates who are currently in office, but we're trying to catch up on deferred maintenance and get ahead of growth. So if you go to the next slide, I'll give you a little bit more detail. Across these four bonds, we're proposing $80 million total, $20 million each. So we're looking at a Parks and Recreation Bond, a Transportation Bond, an Affordable Housing Bond, and a Public Safety Bond. The increase to the average home would be about $110 a year, or about, what is it, $9.16 a month, if all four pass. So 10 bucks a month for all four, and that, those estimates are based on a valuation of around $460,000 a year property tax, which is just giving an average, so you can kind of gauge up or down based on your experience. If you go to our next slide, Katie. So I'm going to give a little bit of depth into each of the four. For the Affordable Housing Bond, we're looking to really drive housing to go beyond being the concept of affordable, but into really attainable homeownership by putting money into things like our home repair program and down payment assistance, to be able to leverage money to influence private investment so that when we are seeing private development, we can get more and more affordable units in those projects, and also to redevelop city-owned land. The next slide will explain our transportation programming. We're going to be looking to do road resurfacing, sidewalk improvements, pedestrian safety, multi-use paths. There's some examples of where you might see improvements. That's the transportation package. Our next one is around Parks and Recreation. We just finished a really phenomenal Parks and Rec master plan that guides the type of programming and the type of services and infrastructure we need for the next 10 years. And so we're basically using that thoughtful, diligent plan to guide the spending here. We see things like the Malvern Hills Pool Park redone, the Shiloh Community Center get attention, Walton Street Park, and more. And then our last one is supporting public safety facilities, again, another $20 million package. This would update the Oakley Fire Station in East Asheville to be a LEED-certified, brand-new facility for our firefighters. We'd also look at improvements in other public safety facilities where we have firefight and police type of service. So that's the, that's the essence of what's the deal. That's what you're going to see. That's what I hope you share with your friends and your family of what is happening with these bonds. But I really want to talk a little bit about why are we doing this? Okay, that is not a safety email. We really need to accelerate the stewardship of our infrastructure. We are going very, very incrementally, and we have a lot of deferred maintenance. And I've been on council two years, and I'll own that we could go further, but we need some more resources to do this. We also need to improve our fiscal responsibility. What we've found is, for a city of our size, 94,000 people, we're really on the cusp of growing out of being a big town into a small city. And when we look at other cities, we see that they have recurring bond cycles, that every four, eight, six years, they go and ask the voters, hey, we want to do these improvements. What do you think about it? And why they do that is, imagine your home. Have you ever taken out a loan to do roof repairs for your business? When you've tried to scale or you're growing rapidly, you go out and take some loans so that you can really get ahead and point the compass of where you want to go. And Asheville has only done two bonds in the last 40 or so years. So we need to really step into that fiscal responsibility mode where we're being able to borrow money, be very effective at delivering what we promise, and showing the accountability and reporting out on that. And so this bond will usher in that new wave of bond cycles. Here is a QR code. You can look up more information on the different packages, and again, I really hope that each of you gather more information, but that ultimately you vote yes on all four of the bonds. Thank you so much.
At this time, we are going to call to the stage our Asheville City Council candidates. CJ Domingo, Kevin Frazier, Bo Hess, Todd Levin, Kim Roney, and Sage Turner.
Good evening, candidates. My name is Rick Bell. I'm the Executive Director of the Asheville Buncombe Hotel Association. We're now shifting gears to hear from Asheville City Council candidates. So what we'll do next, candidates will be given a minute to introduce themselves during this icebreaker. But, yep, ground rules. But first, some ground rules. Had to turn the page. Take my glasses off. Okay, moderators will ask questions and call on each candidate. Candidates will have up to one minute to respond in the icebreaker and closing questions. Candidates will have up to two minutes to answer each of the, each follow-up question. Moderators will time the candidates' responses. A yellow card will be held up down front when you have 15 seconds left, and a red card when your time is up and you must stop speaking. Moderators will ask the questions and call on the candidates. As I said, candidates will have one minute for the icebreaker and a closing question. Candidates have up to two minutes to each follow-up question. Moderators will time the candidates' response. So with that said...
Thank you so much. Again, Rebecca is right there in front of you all, candidates, with the yellow and red signs, and she will let you know when it is time to end. I am Karis Roberts with the Asheville Brewers Alliance. We will start the discussion with an icebreaker question to allow the candidates to introduce themselves. As I call on you, please share with us your name, the office you're running for, and your top three policy-focused areas. You each get one minute to respond. First up, CJ Domingo.
Hey, everyone. My name's CJ Domingo. I'm running for Asheville City Council. The three things that I have at the core of my campaign is what I call my three pillars. It's what I would want to vote for in a city council person. I thought you might like to as well. First, I want to make sure all those things that we rely upon every day work all the time without fail. This is making sure that our roads and our buses get us where we need to go. When we open our water taps, it is safe, clean, clear, and ready to drink, and that when we call for emergency services, that, those services are well-staffed, well-equipped, and able to come to our aid. And if these things don't work when you need them, how do you plan your day? And if you can't plan your day, how do you plan your future? Which is pillar two for me, investing in the future of Ashevilleians, making sure that we all have ample opportunities to thrive in this community, so we're not having to work until they put us in a hole in the ground. We want to make sure people are getting ahead, and that brings me to point three, making sure that we have clear and accountable governance, so that way we don't miss good opportunities to help people to get ahead. We don't want to have a governor that says sorry all the time. We want one that's making solutions for us. Thank you.
Thank you, CJ. Up next, Kevin Frazier.
Good evening, neighbors. My name's Kevin Frazier, and I'm excited to be running for Asheville City Council. I'm a native of Buncombe County. I grew up out in Candler in West Asheville, and I now call downtown home. I am a lifelong educator, public educator, having worked at UNC Asheville, and today I head up Western Carolina University's programs down at Biltmore Park. I'm also a small business owner. I own Well-Play Board Game Cafe just a couple of blocks over on Cox Avenue. I'm running because too many of my friends are leaving Asheville. They've either left, or they're planning to leave because they can't afford to live here anymore. Affordable housing is absolutely at the top of my list. This isn't just an issue, it's a crisis for us. The second thing for me is safety. I want folks to be able to be comfortable whether they're downtown, and when they pick up the phone, they get fire and police. And I also want to make sure that we have working infrastructure, so when you do turn the water on, you actually get some water coming out. I'm excited about where we can head as our mountain metropolis continues to grow. I'm Kevin Frazier.
Thank you, Kevin. Up next, Bo Hess.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for being here and being a part of this small city. Thank you, AVL Arts, for hosting us. My name is Bo Hess. I am running for Asheville City Council. I am a social worker, a therapist, an addiction specialist, law enforcement trainer, problem solver, and ready to get to work on day one. I am running because I believe that we need mental health representation on council in that open seat. I am focused on making sure that we have holistic safety in our streets. We can't have a thriving Asheville if we don't feel safe. Making sure that we are empathically addressing our mental illness and addiction issues and homelessness, addressing affordability in housing, making sure our core city services are running on time and enhanced, and making sure that we're enhancing our third spaces, our green spaces, our community centers. A connected Asheville is a healthy Asheville. Again, my name is Bo Hess, and I look forward to having this discussion with you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Bo. Up next, Todd Levin.
Hey, I'm Todd Levin. I'm running for Asheville City Council. I am first and foremost a father of three amazing daughters and husband of an absolutely amazing wife, who's absolutely the most patient woman to ever walk this earth. I am an attorney. I have three main focus areas. One is core city services. The other is affordable housing, and then the third is making sure all city staff are paid a full living wage. Okay? With affordable housing, it is 2.1, it is so that the workers of the city can afford to live in the city that they serve. Another is because we need to cut off the pipeline to becoming unhoused. The unhoused crisis is an affordable housing crisis. Under core city services, it's public safety, your water, your sewer, your parks and rec, your infrastructure, your public transportation, your streets and your sidewalks. Again, Todd Levin, and I'm running for Asheville City Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Todd. Up next, Kim Roney.
Good evening, friends and neighbors. My name is Kim Roney, and I am running for reelection to Asheville City Council. I believe that we are capable of taking better care of each other in our mountain home. It's why I have the courage to say no when needed to things like hotel encroachment into our neighborhoods, and the priorities to say yes to things like affordability, true public safety, and climate and neighborhood resiliency. I'm endorsed by the Sierra Club, Center for Biological Diversity, Equality, and Sea, Asheville DSA, WNC Central Labor Council, the AFL-CIO, including the Teamsters 61 and our firefighters' local 332, community leaders like Reverend Amy Cantrell, Frank Crocker, Levine Montgomery, Tiffany and Jeff Santiago, and Drew Reissinger and Gordon Smith. One of the reasons that they have endorsed me is because I don't go along with business as usual. I speak up when I need to, which is why I want to let you know it is time to get yourselves and your neighbors ready for the emergency that is here now with the hurricanes and the ones that are coming. Please sign up for Buncombe County Alerts by dialing 99411 and texting BC Alert.
Thank you, Kim. Up next, Sage Turner.
Thank you. And we did, actually, as a city, just sign on to the state of emergency. So we're gonna, gonna move quickly tonight and get you home safely. I'm Sage Turner, currently serving on city council, seeking reelection. I've lived in Asheville almost 25 years, raised my family here. I love this city. I love working for this city. I would love to continue doing this work, and I ask for your support. My three priorities, in order, are housing. I really believe that all the issues that we encounter in our city can be tied back to some kind of housing issue, so all things housing. Rental, productivity, protection, affordability, accessibility, home ownership, home repair, everything, and all things housing. Number two for me is community safety. That can mean different things to different people. To me, it means our police force, our firefighters, our community responders, and alternative responses. I'm proud to be endorsed by both our police and fire unions. Third for me is basic services and infrastructure. I want us to have a city that we're proud of. I want us to take good care of it. I want us to feel that our residents and our assets in the community as a large are well-taken care of, and we are happy and healthy and thriving, and that's it.
Thank you, Sage. Again, I'm Sherri with Go Local Asheville, and our first question tonight was the first question we also asked to our county commission candidates. It's a very important question for all of us. Our local businesses that make Asheville and Buncombe County so unique are seeing their expenses continue to rise. Wages are also increasing to keep up with cost of living. Inflation that has increased the cost of goods and services are all making it more difficult for small businesses, our local businesses, to stay afloat, and property tax increases are coming. So the question to you is, what ideas do you have to support and sustain our local our local business community and keep them in Asheville? Each candidate has two minutes to respond, and we're gonna start with Kevin Frazier.
Thanks, Sheri. As a brick-and-mortar small business owner and a person who advises small businesses as they build in Asheville, I know what small businesses want most in Asheville from the city is regularity and predictability. Small business owners keep their nose in QuickBooks, trying to make sure they make payroll, pay their bills, and maybe make some money themselves. But when a small business owner gets surprised by something like a dramatic increase in the water rates, it's hard to keep your balance. This year, we saw a significant increase for commercial water rates. Originally was supposed to be one year, is divided up over three. I wish it had been five. What was frustrating in this conversation early in the year was there was this sensibility that somehow businesses were trying to cheat the system. And that wasn't true at all. I mean, frankly, until this spring, me and every other restaurant owner I knew in Asheville, we never knew we even paid a different rate. We paid what the bill was that came to us. Nobody minds or nobody wants to not pay their fair share, but we gotta have some, some predictability. I know there's gonna be two more increases. I don't know when, and I don't know how much. We gotta get out of this adversarial system of businesses versus the city. What I would really love to see us do in Asheville is put a program together like Winston-Salem has. They've got a small business liaison office that serves as a one-stop shop for businesses to navigate permits and grants and city procurement. Our systems are antiquated, and they're designed for a much smaller city than we are and are becoming. We need to modernize those systems, and as we do, we can't ask businesses and residents to just keep waiting it out. We need some help, like a liaison office, to help navigate while council does the great work to make those adjustments and changes to make it easier to do business in the city.
Thank you, Kevin. Bo Hess?
Thank you. Our small businesses are the backbone of our community. And the workers who work in them are the heartbeat. And we must do everything we can to sustain and uplift them. First, we can invest in our people. We need to invest in childcare to make sure that people can get to work, make sure that our mothers and fathers are not stressed at home. Enhance and put in place the recommendations of the continuum of care, which aims to make downtown safer for everyone. Invest in affordable housing and safe and accessible public transportation so that both employees and visitors can access our local businesses more easily. Also, we can bring in other sources of, of work. We can enhance our creative economy by bringing in film, music, and manufacturing. We can advocate to the state legislator to get back a tiered tax system for the big-box, out-of-town corporate stores versus our small businesses that are paying too much. And we can also look at enhancing our buy-local campaigns. I'm a firm believer that our businesses are the best businesses. And we can promote our small businesses and then directly invest in them. Our small businesses are something that I will work every day to make sure we uplift and support while in office. Thank you.
Thank you, Bo. Todd Levin?
Okay, I think first and foremost, what we should not do, and it's really tempting to lean into an anti-tourism stint, and I've seen on the national stage when things get rough, anti-immigration, anti-tourism, anti-others. The tourists absolutely keep a lot of our local businesses afloat, and I think Asheville, we're better than that. We should be open-armed, and we should embrace people, even who don't live in Asheville, to come bring their dollars to help support our local businesses. Now, what we should do is the city should do its job. I think it's literally that simple. Local businesses and their employees absolutely benefit from more affordable housing, better public transportation, better walkability, better bike ability. And a great example is that if we focus on what we're supposed to do as a city, you wouldn't see issues like with the downtown. I know we're gonna talk about the BID soon, but businesses wouldn't feel like they would need to cover down themselves and make up for the services that the city is not providing. Okay, apart from that, there are many small things that the city could, could do. Pick off some low-hanging fruit, like parking discounts for workers downtown. So there's stuff that the business, that the city can do to help support businesses. But I think first and foremost, the number one thing the city should do is just it do its job and let the small businesses do their job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Todd. Kim Roney?
Within the purview of the role of city council, some of the things that we absolutely can do is listen, convene, and lead by example. Some examples: sector-based housing for service industry workers. The county did that for teachers. We know that there's a demand. And if we can work together to provide affordability of housing and transportation costs, that means people are spending more time with their families instead of commuting. That's good for everybody. We need more transportation options to connect businesses with workers and customers. I do hear, and I have seen action, and I'm ready to continue partnership when the service industry workers say that they need more options for parking so they can work downtown. The county currently has a program that is not fully utilized. So one of the things we can do is amplify that program so that more people are aware of it. And our partners, including folks here on the stage, can work on helping us with that. The city absolutely needs to lead on infrastructure and public services, making sure we're sitting the right person with the right tools and training during times of crisis. We, I've worked for four years to help get water parity rates so that everyone's paying their fair share on their water bills so we can keep the water on. That is not only a public safety issue, it's good for business. And then I also just wanted to mention that when the city doesn't pay living wages to its own staff, that makes it difficult for us to recruit and retain the best people so we can provide the quality and equitable public services that our community expects and deserves. This is a choice. It's a matter of priorities. And that's one of the reasons why I used the city financial department's second budget to build a budget and make a recommendation for an alternative budget with councilmember Shanika Smith and Antoinette Mosley this year to make sure that we were doing exactly that with a long-term strategy for wage and compensation. I'm encouraged because we can do this work together, and I need your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Sage Turner?
Hey, what ideas to support and sustain local business community? Thank you for the questions ahead. I was making a list. So first to me, I think pressure on wages can be relieved by housing policy, broad, expansive, thorough housing policy. Our fair market rents, which are a HUD number and are delivered annually, are actually gonna come down for the first time in six years in 2025, as much as 10%. And addressing our housing issues can relieve some of the pressure on wages. We need to implement a business improvement district, which we are going to do, and it's gonna be a pilot. Other areas of the community and business corridors had the option to do this, but didn't feel it was time, so they may adopt one later. But we need that nimbleness. We need that clean representation. We need downtown to be thriving. It is the economic hub for a five-county area, and we need it to be thriving, for the entire city to be thriving. We need to be creative, programs to reduce costs. In the past, when I was with ADA and other organizations, we did this by collaborating on services, shared legal advice, getting lease advice, getting together to assess calendars so no events countered each other, that kind of thing. At my other job across the street, at the co-op, we started a business merchant program where about 40 restaurants buy goods from us at our significant volume to save them money on their cost of goods. We'll have to do things like that, I think. Stabilizing population near businesses. This means infusion of housing in downtown and along commercial corridors so that you're not just relying on transient visitors to support your businesses. You need actual individuals and residential population around them. Also, improving transportation options. The biggest, secondary biggest cost to our residents after housing is transportation, as much as 25% of our resident's income is spent on transportation. So the more we can do to diversify options to get into the business corridors and to your jobs, the better and cheaper it will be for the employees and the less you'll have in turnover. Lastly, I was pleased to have some of the meetings with AIR and some housing developers to start working on some kind of a foundation or nonprofit or organization that would be ready and willing to build housing for service sector workers when we finally get tourism tax to be able to commit to it.
Thank you, Sage. And CJ Domingo?
So this is something that I, I understand this on a very personal level. My family and I did a Asian grocery store over in East Asheville for about 25 years. Just shut our doors after 25 years, but for a good reason. The principal person who was running it wanted to retire, so, you know, nice one on this front. But I understand the struggles that we face with our local businesses here, and also I had worked in a number of restaurants where any time that you have a change, as Kevin called out, you, you're not resilient looking at that direction. You're too focused on making sure that your business is doing what it needs to do to serve your customers and serve your community. And so I think that for this one, because I'm glad everybody brought up this stuff for the workers, because when you're looking at this problem, it's really a two-factor problem. Businesses need to have more money coming in, less money going out. Taking care of workers and making sure that their costs aren't rising does help with the biggest cost, which is labor, and secondarily, to some extent, some of the price of goods and services that they have to buy from the community using the area. For things that we could do to try and help support businesses, I do like the idea of trying to bring in a sort of a nursery program to help to build businesses up. Starting a new business is not something we need to reinvent the wheel for. I would like to see more opportunities for the city to reach out, to help people to get their businesses, to get past that sapling phase and become strong and resilient on their own. I think that something the city ought to be looking more into is like with the Go Local program, which brought a lot of folks to our door as a grocery store, and with the Best of Mountain Express, when we can help to essentially lubricate the wheels of getting customers to businesses, those businesses prosper, the customers learn more about all of the really great opportunities we have in our city. It works for both of them, and it's something the city can do very cheaply, very responsibly, and tailor it for each situation. I would like to see, overall, more involvement, more thoughtful, more thoughtful action taken so that way we can all prosper. Thank you.
Thank you, CJ. Again, I'm Megan with AIR, and our next question is about the proposed Go Bonds and diversified funding. As Councilor Ullman already explained, this fall, locals will be voting on the city's proposed general obligation bond referendum. If passed, how do you think the city can best maximize this opportunity? Additionally, what other funding tools do you think the city should consider to better address the community's growing needs? For this question, you'll have two minutes to respond, and we will start with Bo Hess.
Thank you. I am proudly supporting the Geo Bonds for Housing, Transportation, Public Safety, Parks on November 5th, and I encourage everyone to do the same. In a state where we can't implement new revenue streams without state approval, this is one of the smartest ways we can fund critical capital projects at a low interest rate and free up other city funds for wage increases for city employees, for example. This is about investing in Asheville's future. For public safety, I'll advocate to ensure every single fire station is upgraded and that our first responders have the best, most reliable equipment. Let's make sure our police vehicles and technology are state-of-the-art to keep Asheville safe. When it comes to parks, we need better trash patrols, more lighting, and safer, well-maintained greenways. Let's add more recycling options and expand those greenways to connect more neighborhoods. For housing, I want to see this bond fund, the purchase of affordable land, support a shelter expansion, and contribute to a home repair fund that can help residents stay in their homes. And finally, for transportation, we need expanded bus routes, but we also need to think beyond just buses. Let's look at smaller electric vehicles to move people efficiently. And also, finally, and most importantly, let's give transit riders the dignity by building covered bus stops so no one has to stand in the cold or the rain while they are waiting to catch the bus. We can't miss this chance to build a better Asheville. Let's use these bonds to create the city we all deserve and continue to explore innovative funding solutions that put Asheville on the path to success.
All right, thank you, Bo. Next up is Todd Levin.
Thank you. Okay, so to maximize this opportunity, the city needs to prioritize funding the initiatives that actually address the issue at hand and not just mitigating the symptoms of the issue. So actually focus on the problem itself, not just focus on a deep spending for a bandage. For example, we just came out with our, it's a 113-page, 10-year affordable housing plan. Of the 40 solutions that we came up, and they were good. And I really like the mitigation solutions of the rent control and helping granny build a new roof. And so that, that's important, but only two of them actually went to the problem. And one was to reduce or remove the regulatory barriers to building affordable housing, and one is to increase incentives to building affordable housing. So if you have an issue with affordable housing, you need more affordable housing. There are people who are suffering because of the harms, and we should focus upon that, but we should absolutely prioritize our spending dealing with the affordable housing or dealing with the issues at hand so we're not just stuck in the year after year after year having to spend more money to mitigate the problems when we can just actually work on solving them. Another thing, the, the other funding tools, that was the second part, because we have a limited source of funds, with building more affordable housing, just building more housing in general, a lot, an acre lot with 10 families is going to generate a significant more tax basin than an acre lot with a single family. The more we build, the more affordable housing we build, the more taxes the city will have. So it, it's like, it's like a shot that kills multiple birds. So we need to build, we need to build affordable housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Todd. Next up is Kim Roney.
So first up, how do we maximize the opportunity of the bonds? Partnership! Land is really expensive. We shouldn't be doing anything alone with the land that we have, whether it's creating a fire station for Oakley that also includes elements of a climate resiliency hub that has solar panels and a battery backup with whatever the neighborhood imagines. Because through engagement, we would probably hear things like making sure that there's water backups and food backups and places for community engagement. Because when there's a crisis, we see these kinds of climate resiliency hubs across the country are ways to boost not only individual safety and well-being, but also neighborhood well-being, and that's good for the whole community. So we can do that with our public safety and parks and rec. For transit, we need a regional transit authority so that we're partnering with the county and Western North Carolina to connect people more effectively. This will help us reduce costs while doing transit better. And then for things like housing, we can do things like land banking, partnering with organizations, like, for example, we saw the Haywood Street Development Project. We saw a lot of partnership around that. We should see that happen more and more. Let's see, what are the other funding tools you think the city should consider? Well, number one, we should cut costs. A lot of times, we're duplicating costs, often out of just reactionary measures. So for example, I think of transit because I ride the bus every day. When we have two facilities and two different fleets with two different management companies and two different managers and two different sets of staff, it means we're duplicating a lot of costs without actually delivering on the services. But I'm also a member of the Art C Coalition with AARP and Mountain True and Just Economics, and we're suggesting that we could actually work with the county to expand service to South Asheville, connect that with, with West Asheville and connect it to more living wage jobs, which would be good for diversifying our economy. So much more at kimronifreshville.com.
Thank you, Kim. Sage Turner, up next.
It's hard in two minutes. So the big thing I want you to take away about the bonds is that we need a complete bond cycle. We can do these one-off programs, but until the community gets into a cycle where we have a repeating cycle of bonds, we'll continue to have to raise taxes to do that. But once we get into a cycle, we won't. So the bonds need to be impactful. They need to be felt across the community so that at future election and ballots, they will support them. So for housing, that means the Housing Trust Fund. We learned that every dollar in affordable housing bond dollars, we were able to leverage eight more. That's impressive, it's $25 million. So Housing Trust Fund should get a big infusion. It was our biggest bang for the buck. For parks, we need community centers and aquatic centers year-round indoor. We need activities. The bigger the city gets and the more densely we populate it, the more these outdoor spaces and parks and community centers are gonna be valuable. Transportation, big, we need roads, sidewalks, greenways, all the things. It's a mess. We know it, we're crumbling, we have decades of deferred maintenance, we have a lot to catch up on. We can plow through some of that, pun intended. First responders' facilities, I feel like we owe it to our first responders. I was touring both our shelters that are being built and our first responder living environments in the same month, and I was a kind of aghast at how some of the newer construction was far advanced, and our first responders are living in less-than-ampl conditions, so that needs to be addressed. Other revenues, we really need a transit revenue option. We've tried a county-wide transit sales tax. We tried to, via Senator Mayfield, to get a bill for the city to be able to have its own transit tax. It's not legal in the city. But transit is a very big expensive tool for us, and we are subsidizing it across other enterprise funds and with our general fund. And it makes it hard for us to maintain living wages when we are trying to tackle this beast of transit, and we have to bring in other revenues. Primarily, in the industry of transit, ridership fuels more funds. So the bigger the ridership, the more grants that come in. But our ridership is static. We have a lot of work to do. Also, just growth in property tax. Also, just growth in property tax. I really want us to get our heads on right about how we approach housing and get the major developers to build in the affordability that we need by way of ordinances and solutions that we're working on now so that we don't have to spend all our money subsidizing them. I'm out of time.
Yes. More on the website. Thank you, Sage. We'll move to CJ Domingo.
Hey, so on the GEO Bonds, I really am a big fan of all the stuff that we are going to be supporting with the bonds. In terms of what would maximize this opportunity, I think that kind of echoing a little bit of what Todd's talked about, we should look for things that are going to be the most transformative. I look to things like making sure that when we are doing housing, we are not just focused on the long term, but taking steps that we can do today to get lots of smaller housing up and going, find private partnerships where we can in order to get more success now. Because if we want this to be a part of our permanent structure, people need to feel that this is something that's paying off for them. As we found out from the last bond cycle, folks in East Asheville have a big gripe about they supported the bond and they expected to get a sidewalk from Beverly to Bell Road, and that only just now started paying off. We want to make sure that they are getting that success, that they are feeling that success. And we were looking at places where we can invest in transportation. I would like to see things beyond just making sure that we have good bus stops, though we do need good bus stops. I would like to see investment in an opportunity to learn by doing, having mobility buses go out to communities and help to get people from where they live over to the main thoroughfare so we don't have to send a big city bus into more dense neighborhoods. We can help to get them over to that. And as we get people used to having that transit, supporting them, getting them to where they need to go, we can also eventually hopefully get a circulator service up and going. That way, we can make sure that all parts of the city are fairly accessible to everybody all across transportation. When we're looking at other funding sources, I believe that we could really, I've banged this drum a lot, I think that we need to make sure we're looking at fees and charges manual to make sure that we are addressing our charges in a way that forgives our local businesses and for stuff that is not their fault, as Kevin was pointing out with the water, but also harnesses more of the tourism dollars to make that go to work for our community. We also desperately do need to cut costs. Kim was right with that. I used to work for the city's transportation division. That's something that we need to do as well. Thank you.
Thank you, CJ. We'll wrap this question up with Kevin Frazier.
I support the bonds. We need an affordable bond program, a mature program like every other city in North Carolina. The most important thing the city can do to maximize the bonds is to get the projects off the ground as quickly as possible. Otherwise, inflation, even regular inflation, will eat the value of the bonds down to where we'll have to put more money in. What we're going to do with the bonds is what is being promised to the voters. It's not guessing along the way. It's a set of projects that the city's put forward. In regard to other funding sources, I'd like to see the city create a grants office. One of my frustrations with the water rate increase for businesses and residents is it's to fund infrastructure, yet over the past several years, as other North Carolina cities received tens of millions of dollars in federal money, we didn't apply for any of it for our water system. Additionally, I'd like to see our city play a more active role in supporting good development. I'm disappointed that Project Aspire fell apart. And while there are parts of that project that I would like to have seen evolve differently than originally proposed, it was a project slated to add more than 600 housing units, including 150 affordable units, a new Y, a new daycare center, retail, and lots of other community amenities, and a growth in annual tax revenue for that property from $26,000 this year to $3.5 million a year. And it fell apart because everybody stayed at arm's length, and instead of figuring out how to work together, there were fingers pointed. In the end, it failed because of poor communication between the city, the Y, and the First Baptist Church. $3.5 million is real money, y'all. That's 1.5 cent tax increase that wouldn't have to be added. The state won't allow Asheville to annex, so growing the value of commercial property is important to grow revenue, expand employment, grow commercial space, and grow much-needed housing.
Thanks, Kevin.
I'm Katie Cornell again with Arts AVL, and I'll be asking our third question for tonight, which centers around the city manager recruitment. So our current city manager, Deborah Campbell,'s contract expires in late 2025, and it is already known that she plans to retire at that time. Asheville uses the council-manager form of local government, under which elected city council members are the community leaders and policymakers who establish the vision for Asheville, and hire the city manager to carry out policy and ensure that all residents are equitably served. If elected, you will have a major role in the selection of our next city manager. What are you looking for in the next city manager? You will each have two minutes to answer this question, and we'll start with Todd Levin.
Thank you. Okay, so this is exactly like when a board of directors or board of trustees picks a new head of school or an executive director, okay? The two main things that you look for, you look for character and you look for experience. As far as character goes, what's really, really important is that we have to pick a city manager who's not going to let us, the city council, micromanage the city manager, okay? So she or he has to be strong enough to be able to say no. He or she runs the city staff. They run the day-to-day execution of the city. The city council does not. We're much more like a board of directors. And with my experience, which is mostly on local board of directors and trustees of local performing arts nonprofits, you have to pick a strong manager with a strong character. The second is experience. You need education, and you need livable, working, lived experience, okay, in accordance with the organization's mission. So as far as Asheville goes, that's development, parks and rec, public works, planning and urban design, water resources, sustainability. So it has to be someone with the education and the lived experience of dealing with these. I prefer to promote within. I know the city really likes to spend money on contracts and consultants and searches abroad. I think we don't have to go any further than Asheville itself to find an expert in here. And in fact, Ben Woody, actually, I don't know if I'm allowed to say his name or not, okay? Pretend I didn't say Ben Woody, but someone like that would be a perfect choice for the next city manager. Local, experienced, and that's what we're looking for. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Todd. Kim Roney.
So now I have nonprofit management experience, corporate and hotel management experience, and experience on city council. So I'll let you know a little bit about what I've learned and what I'm looking for specifically. One, I'm looking for someone who has experience with managing people. Two, someone who is skillful in oversight and articulation of the budget. How does your money move into the city and serve the people? And three, someone who's passionate about engaging the community. We have a caring community. We show up, and I need somebody who's not scared of that, but actually really wants to be in community even when it's hard. Now, what I've learned from my experience overseeing staff is that it may be possible that you don't find the person that does all of those things, but you want someone who knows when they have weaknesses and knows when to delegate, right? So I also wanted to name, because a lot of times, the manager is going to get attention, and they should, but council has a very specific role, too. Any manager that we hire, if they get the same instructions from council, you will get the same outcomes. Once again, council sets the budget plans and policies, so if you get the same budget plans and policies, the manager will get the same instructions, and we will get the same outcomes. The city council hires the manager, the city attorney, and the city clerk. Our city clerk has been trying to retire for a long time, so it's very likely that we'll also be hiring the next city clerk. And our city clerk does so much work to make sure that our public documents are available, that our meeting schedules are available, so that friends and neighbors like you who care to show up know when to show up and what to show up about. So those are the things I care about and how we can do it together.
Thanks, Kim. Sage Turner.
I loved so much of that, and I love Ben Woody, so. So having been in this seat for four years now, I think I would answer this question differently than I did four years ago. For me, I want to see a steadfast commitment to our organization, its goals, its existing plans and studies. We really don't have time or money and energy to derail and get off track. We need to continue to push through the work we've done, the studies we've assessed. We're in implementation phase, so I need an implementer. Highly efficient in communication and execution for that reason. Excellence in team management. It's a very large staff, 1,200 people. There's a diverse need across all departments. We have 17 departments. They really need to understand how to manage managers, but also how to let those managers manage their departments. I think understanding of the pivotal role that our city plays in this county, in this region, and in this state as an isolated blue dot over here in the western part of the state is pivotal. There is a lot of things that you need to know about the state of North Carolina that are different than other states and how we operate, what we can and cannot do. So I would like to have someone that is very familiar with North Carolina laws. Part of the reason that the Aspire project fell apart was because the developer team was from South Carolina, and by the way, they wanted us to forgive all $3.5 million of that every year, so it was a net neutral gain. It was no gain. Lastly, I want to see more presence in the community. As Kim said, I would like to see someone who's not afraid to go into the room and have the hard conversations as our primary leader. And I think character is in there as well, but we really need implementation and experience in executing plans right now. We have done our work. We have done the history. We understand our problems. Now we need to get to the hard job of getting them done.
Thanks, Sage. CJ Domingo.
I have a bit of an unusual outlook on it. Part of my growing up here as a Nashville native is I had the opportunity to meet quite a few city managers over the years. My dad worked for the city, and I would go to see him after school and hang out with him in his office a lot. And because of his work in the IT field, he would frequently go up to answer questions about, they would be, the city manager would ask questions about, "We're trying to put computers in cop cars. Why is this not working?" Or, "We're trying to fix the computers in the civic center, and why they aren't communicating to City Hall? Why is that going on?" And so something that I have a lot of admiration for Deborah's work, and she has done a good job executing the direction that council has given her over time. But one thing that I would like above and beyond, obviously professionalism, ability to commit and get these projects done, is somebody who is more active in investing in city employees. So there was a couple of former guys I was thinking of, Ken Micalev and Doug Bean. These were both people who were our city managers. They came and they got involved in city employees' lives, making sure that we were promoting from within, as Todd was talking about, and making opportunities for people to branch out and grow and got them really committed, so we weren't always trying to hire, you know, a stormwater administrator. We had people who had grown up here and really learned their skills here, and we had invested in them, so they invested in us right back. And I'd like to see some more of that, because we're such an unusual town that with some of these other conversations, we see that we're trying to copy and paste what worked for Durham, what worked for Raleigh, but we have some things that make us a little unusual. You can't just copy and paste. And so I want some people who are going to be involved in that and help to make sure that we are tailoring the right answers and the right solutions for what we need at the time. So thank you.
Thanks, CJ. Kevin Frazier.
I think hiring the city manager is going to be one of the most important duties of next year's council. I'm looking for somebody that has government experience. Government's weird, y'all, and it's important that they've had the experience of navigating those peculiar systems. I would love for them to have experience running either a commercial business or a large nonprofit. I want them to have large organization experience. The city of Asheville is a big organization, and it has to be run that way to do good work for all of our neighbors. I also want them to come with a track record of accomplishing large projects. You know, the bond referendums are huge projects. These aren't simple affairs, and we've got to have somebody who knows how to manage a team that can manage those projects and do it well. I also want somebody who can focus on customer service. I don't think that people think about good customer service coming from the city of Asheville. That's not an offense to any person that works for the city. I think it's more about our systems being out of date and outmoded than it is bad folks. I also want them to operate within a fundamental framework of equity and environmentalism. Those issues, those aren't issues to me. Those are frameworks of operation, that everything else, from affordable housing to public safety, to homelessness, to the bonds, all of that needs to be within the frameworks of equity and environmentalism. And I do want them to have the strength of will to be able to tell the mayor and city council, "You all govern, and I'll manage." And I think that relationship makes for a really good operational city government.
Thanks, Kevin. Bo Hess.
Thank you. Selecting the city manager is one of the most important decisions that we will make, whoever is seated in November. We need a city manager who can guide Asheville through this period of growth and transition with a steady hand and clear vision. Our city is facing growing pains, which, while challenging, are actually good problems to have if we manage them effectively. I'm looking for a city manager who has a culture of service. I'm looking for a city manager who has experience leading cities through similar growth cycles and can help Asheville navigate these changes with balance and foresight. This person must be flexible and adaptable, not rigid in their thinking, and have a strong track record of financial responsibility to ensure we're making smart, sustainable decisions. Equity has to be top of their mind, ensuring that every single Asheville resident, regardless of background, is served fairly and inclusively. Transparency is essential. Our residents deserve to know how decisions are made and how funds are spent. Finally, we need someone who can hit the ground running on day one, ready to tackle the very complex issues we face, and help lead us into the future with a collaborative and solution-oriented approach. This next city council position is about building a thriving, resilient Asheville for everyone, and I am committed to finding the right leader to help us achieve that.
Thank you, Bo. Again, I'm Sheri with Go Local. Our last question is about the implementation of the Business Improvement District. In June, city council approved a new Business Improvement District, or BID, for downtown Asheville. A BID administers services within a defined district above and beyond those provided by the city. The services are funded through a special tax assessment added to property tax bills within the defined service area. The city recently collected additional community input on service needs and priorities for the district and also issued a request for proposals for a contracted service provider. So our question for you is, looking into the future, what results are you hoping to see one year from now? How do you think the city should engage with the BID service provider to ensure these outcomes? Again, each candidate has two minutes, and we're going to start with Kim Roney.
Thank you for framing the question this way. So what will I expect one year from now? Transparency, accountability, and honesty on whether or not it's working. Number one, the city council's role is going to be the budget. So while we're talking about all these cost-of-living increases, we are allowing a brand-new $1.2 million tax that's disproportionately going to hit renters, commercial and residential renters. So we're going to have to look at the budget. We're also going to need to appoint the body that oversees the budget and the services. And so that's going to be like a new TDA. It's going to be an unelected body overseeing our tax dollars. So what we can do is create an environment of trust and accountability so that we can welcome and empower people with lived and professional experience to help guide this process moving forward. That's my role now, and I'm committed to it. But public safety is our biggest issue in our community, and this is still going to leave gaps. As a service industry worker who's worked downtown in Beer City, USA, sometimes you're cleaning up the bathrooms and not getting home until 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, and the BID is not meant to service that. Would I have felt safer if someone was sweeping the sidewalks at that hour when I'm trying to get home? Yeah. So where are we going to fill in the gaps? Because the new tax is going to make it really hard to raise the taxes again to fill the gaps. We need to be sending the right person with the right tools and training for the real serious current issues around behavioral health crisis and homelessness and substance use and opioid poisoning, and I still have those same concerns. We're just going to have less resources to pull from to do it. So let's share an accountability together.
Thank you, Kim. Sage Turner.
I am pretty excited for the BID. I think I was part of different groups and conversations around forming a BID for at least a decade before it came together. least a decade before it came together. I will say that I am also hesitant and wary and concerned and want to make sure it's implemented well. For that reason, I fought for things like a board that was comprised of even number of renters and owners, so there would be parity, that there would be an odd number of people on that board so that we wouldn't get stuck in some kind of tie vote thing, that the meetings would be public, so everyone would be informed, that we would get surveys and information annually before we approve their budgets and tax increases or whatever it is, even if we zeroed it out. We could do anything we want as the council annually. So I'm trying to see, I'm trying to get this thing across the board in an exciting way to see literal improvements in the first year so that we feel like it's a success. To me, that looks like improved cleanliness, improved services, coordinated services. We have a lot going on in downtown. We have 60, well, pre-pandemic, we had 60,000 people coming downtown every day. I don't know what it is now. And there's a lot of visitors, there's a lot of residents, there's a huge workforce that is troubled by all of the congestion. There's a lot changing, bike lanes, construction, stormwater on Patton Avenue, don't get me started. There's a lot going on and we just need some, what we're calling community stewards now. They're not going to be security guards or anything. It's going to help connect people with the services they need, the directions they need, whatever it is. And I'm excited. I also want big, over-the-top holiday lights, like let's have some festivities in downtown. I miss flower baskets. I miss gardening. I miss the beautification. I miss us being really proud of our downtown. And it can be that again. It's been a troublesome set of years, but we're getting back into the swing of things. We're getting back into an economic upturn for us. I think a BID is going to help. It's a nimble tool that the businesses downtown haven't had before. I'm hopeful and I'm going to be watching to make sure it's implemented well because if not, it can be changed or, I guess, ended, really. Thank you.
Thank you, Sage. CJ Domingo.
So, with the BID, I am, I just want to be honest upfront. I'm very skeptical about the need for the BID, but we do have it now because ultimately I think that the government should govern. I don't like bringing in a private company to handle government business. But it's passed. We voted for it. It's happening. And so, I would like to succeed. I want it to, you know, be a phenomenal, rip-roaring success. You know, that would be great. What I would like to see is if I was going to put a stamp on it and say that it was a success, it should be that it is a transformative success, that is, we get more out of it than we could have if the city just went ahead and had extra folks cleaning the streets, extra folks pressure washing the sidewalks, helping to make sure that we keep the storm drains clear, making sure that we could put up the lights ourselves. There were a lot of opportunities where, for city employees, we had ideas of things that we wanted to do to try and improve the quality of life around our work zones. I was in transportation, but I talked to folks in waste management, in streets, folks in the traffic engineering division. But we have a problem as a city of getting in our own way and having too much bureaucracy and this is an expression of that, that we are not seeing solutions happen. And so, for that, I would like to see the BID really do actually get this stuff done without a lot of hemming and hawing and making sure that we are micromanaging them. But I am also very cautious about, and again, skeptical is the key word here, about the idea of there being a group of ambassadors, or there was another word used that I heard earlier, but I forgot to write it down, but the ambassador program, essentially, we know what I'm talking about with it. But the ambassadors, I want to make sure that they are there to be good guides to the city, essentially a good neighbor on every street corner. I really don't want to see them turning into an alternative police force that might be a harassing force, because I think about my childhood and all the dumb stuff that I did downtown that made my childhood so fun. And I really don't like the idea of somebody not getting to grow up that way.
Thank you, CJ. Kevin Frazier.
I want the BID to be successful. I live in the CBD and I saw the BID tax on my tax bill. My business is in the CBD. I've seen that tax, the BID tax on my tax bill. And so, I have a personal vested interest, but moreover, I want our community to benefit from this. So earlier in the week, I went through the RFP that the city's issued. If you want to have fun, go through a city-issued RFP. But I'll tell you what made me proud about it is it reflected community input, some of which was loud, some of which was quiet, but it's in there. And you see it particularly in the community stewards that have nothing to do with some parapolic force or security role. They're there to help folks. Before, when all this was going on about the BID, I went and visited two bids because I wanted to know how they worked. And while I was in Chattanooga, I'm chatting with one of, they call him an ambassador, and she noticed there's a fellow sleeping over in one of the entrances to the business and they're getting ready to open. She goes over very kindly and says, "Hey, Joe buddy, you know you can't be sleeping, they're getting ready to open up." And he said, "Ain't, not a problem." And I realized they had a relationship. And then she said, "Do you need anything to eat?" And he said, "No, I'm good today." And that, to me, was the kind of humane, neighborly exchange that I hope happens there. And she told me, she said, "If Joe was having trouble today, then I've got numbers I call to make sure that he gets the assistance he needs." She told me, she said, "I want to make sure he's okay today because he's my neighbor as much as the person who lives in the house beside the house I'm in." And so, that, to me, will be success for us next year if we see that. And I want to see a clean town. Downtown is not as clean as it used to be. And I think this provides some resources that doesn't strain the rest of the city like out in West Asheville, that doesn't get beat up in the way that downtown does. And it's a fairer way to take care of that.
Thank you, Kevin. Bo Hess.
Thank you. I also take the time with every single decision, even the ones I'm not directly involved in voting at the moment, to learn as much as possible. I met with business owners, people for and against the BID. I met with people who were outside of the BID downtown. I traveled to Minneapolis and shadowed their BID ambassadors, traveled to Cincinnati and shadowed their BID ambassadors. And what I found was overwhelmingly positive. Much like Mr. Frazier here, I saw the ambassadors actually providing meals, giving blankets, providing support, calling in support when needed. And overwhelmingly, when I talked to the citizens of those, just random people that were on the sidewalk, they had glowing reports. So in one year, I'm hoping to see a downtown Asheville that feels safer, more inclusive and easier to navigate where both residents and visitors can enjoy open businesses, safe streets, and a responsive city government and environment. One of the key goals of the BID should be to create a welcoming space, but we must also ensure the right professionals are being called to handle mental health crisis effectively. The ambassadors hired through the BID should be trained in crisis intervention techniques and basic mental health first aid, reflecting Asheville's commitment to inclusivity and care for all of its citizens. Additionally, I'd like to see more community-driven events and festivals that showcase what makes Asheville and its businesses so unique. We should also focus on creating fun, local engagement initiatives like window decorating contests and improved downtown decorations during the holidays to enhance the vibrancy of downtown. The city council's role will be to choose the right service provider through the RFP process, someone who understands and shares Asheville's values of equity, inclusivity, and justice. And after a review process of outcomes, if the BID isn't operating in a way that aligns with those values, we can have a broader discussion about what to do next. Thank you.
Thank you, Bo. And Todd Levin.
Okay, looking at the downtown Asheville BID website, list three issues the BID will address. Public safety, cleanliness, and community. People like Kevin, they're already paying taxes for public safety and cleanliness. So we keep hearing this is for stuff above and beyond. This is stuff that the city should be providing anyways, except for the community, which is pretty exciting. But the other two, the public safety and the cleanliness, when the city did the Asheville BID focus group and they talked to the different communities, the different neighborhoods, what do you want from the BID? This is what they said. The downtown area residential neighbors, safety, fear of walking home or their cars at night. The block slash east end community members, insufficient city services, infrastructure, parking, sidewalk accessibility, tree maintenance. The downtown business tenants said they wanted additional resources because they did not feel comfortable having to approach the people who they had to approach. The downtown residential renters, pedestrian improvements, improvements to light. This is stuff the city, people like Kevin, his taxes should be providing this. He should not have to pay additional taxes to get what the city is supposed to get. So, what I would like to see in a year, I would like to see the city, not the BID. I would like to see the city cover down, make it safe, make it clean, so that the BID only has to focus on the good community parts that CJ and Kevin and Bo and everyone else here talked about, the good stuff that the BID can do. That's the community. That's why the businesses and the property owners should be joining together to pay this extra money in addition. Public safety, the sidewalks, your streets, the cleanliness, that's what the city should be doing. Thank you.
Okay, once again, I'm Rick Bell from the Hotel Association. We will now hear from some final thoughts from each of the candidates. You'll each get one minute to respond. We'll start with Sage Turner.
Closing statements? Okay. Well, thank you, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight and braving the storm. I'm glad to hear it stopped raining. We'll get home safely. And thank you to our hosts for having us. I'm Sage Turner. You can find more information about me on my website, sageforashville.com. We didn't speak really much about background, so I'll share a little bit more. I have a master's in city planning. When I joined council, I had been chairing the Affordable Housing Committee for a number of years. And because of that expertise and my job and project management and kind of construction management, I chair our city council's Housing and Community Development Committee and I also chair our Four County Regional Housing Consortium. So I work a lot daily on our housing issues. It is just integral to why I'm running and wish to stay in this seat. I just, I appreciate your support. I've really enjoyed the job. I hope to be there again in November. I appreciate the support thus far. I appreciate your vote. And I did bring some information in the back, some about my priorities, but also this list of 25 accomplishments. So if you can stop by the table.
Thank you, Sage.
Pick it up. Sorry.
Next up, CJ Domingo.
Well, I want to thank you also for coming out tonight. Sorry for being kind of strange just standing up. I just, as a political person, I'm not very political. I really like to remove barriers between representatives and the people. I didn't get a chance to talk too much about my background, but I did want to circle back to that a little bit. Born and raised Asheville native, went to the Asheville City Schools, went to Asheville High School, got to go to the North Carolina School of Science and Mathematics, got a full scholarship from there, went to UNCA, got a degree in biology, graduated in the 2008 housing crisis, but I've spent my working career doing logistics because I discovered I really like working in logistics and solving problems for folks. And so, when I was starting out working with my family store, we knew a lot of Asian restaurants that needed help. I liked to go there and help them out. And ultimately, during COVID, I got a chance to go work with a pharmacy, help them sort out their logistics stuff. And then I went to work for the city where I tried to solve their problems and they had a lot of problems. I tried a lot pushing them up from the bottom, trying to clear the pipeline to get good ideas up to leadership to get stuff done. So, it wasn't working that way. I've circled the top.
Thank you, CJ.
I'm going to try and pull it out. Thank you.
Next up is Kevin Frazier.
When I was a kid growing up in Asheville, it was a city on the brink. Much of it was boarded up and much of it abandoned. But through good leadership, we're a city that came back. We're one of the great success stories in downtown revitalization. I'm a historian and I've taught the history of Asheville for 20 years and I keep talking about leaders that stepped up and stepped up to make the wonderful mountain metropolis we have today. And I finally realized I needed to stop talk about stepping up and I needed to step up myself. I've never run for public office, but I've been a public servant as a public educator for more than 20 years. I know how to be collaborative and I know how to compromise. It's not a dirty word. My goal is to get us to yes. The yes is hard. Some, a lot of times the no is the easier, but the yes is that hard work to get us to compromise and to collaborate. I'm excited to be running for Asheville City Council. Check me out at kevinforashville.com. Thanks for being here tonight, y'all.
Thank you, Kevin. Next up is Bo Hess.
Hello, everyone. Again, my name is Bo Hess. I am a social worker and I need your vote November 5th. You know, I've never asked any of my patients, "Are you independent, Republican, or Democrat?" But every day, I've sat with them during some of the toughest times of their lives and worked towards practical solutions that had a positive impact on their lives. And that is exactly what I commit to doing for every single person in Asheville, whether it's fighting for our LGBTQIA brothers and sisters, our small businesses, whether it's fighting for our young people or our first responders, and I will fight for you. And this is affirmed by my endorsements, by Equality NC, the North Carolina AFL-CIO, I Show Up With The Workers, the North Carolina Sierra Club, the Young Democrats, the Asheville Firefighters Association, and the North Carolina Police Banalova Association. We are out there, we are fighting hard, we are knocking on doors for you, and I need your help November 5th to make sure we have mental health representation on council. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Todd Levin. I have to say, you guys are really lucky. I am surprised over the past year how fondly I have grown to these people who I'm sitting here with. They're all really wonderful, especially you. No, they're all really nice people. No matter who you vote for, you're going to win. But I think forums like this show we have a profoundly different approach to government based upon our history and our lived experiences. I'm an attorney, I'm a multiple combat vet, I'm a father, I'm a husband. The way I view certain approaches and how to issue spot is different, but we're all good. And I think that's lucky because that's not the same with a lot of elections in this country. So you guys are lucky. I'm proud to be up here. Thank you very much. Todd Levin.
Thank you, Todd. Kim?
Kim Roney here. I love this room because I'm an artist who has also worked a second job, as many artists in this community do, in food and beverage and hospitality, who also volunteered the every extra minutes of time that I had with a radio station. And so I just want to say thank you to the volunteers who are translating tonight's event into Spanish, it's the only event I know of so far this year where that's happening. Look, we want to make this a great place to live and work because then it will be a great place to visit. That means prioritizing affordability, true public safety, climate and neighborhood resiliency. It means climate justice. It means using our roles to stand up for human and civil rights. Because if we do that and we focus on economic resiliency and stability, then we'll have safe, healthy, and housed individuals, which means healthier neighborhoods, which means a more resilient community. That's my priority. I can't do it alone. I need you to share the work with me, which is why I invite you to join me on Facebook and Instagram at KimRoneyForAshville and check out The Monday Minute.
And thank you very much. That concludes tonight's program. Another round of applause for the candidates. And a big thanks again to my co-host sitting before me and tonight's sponsors, The Orange Peel. Please tip your bartenders. 103.3 Asheville FM for their translating. League of Women Voters, they're back there with voter registration and Leslie Shaw Design. And thank you for joining us. On the screen, we've got a lot of voter information. Please take a picture as you exit and make a voting plan. Thank you very much and have a great night.